In session. Melissa, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Clow. Vice Chair Lawrence. Secretary Smith. Commissioner Inojos Paul. Commissioner Faulkner. She on Zoom? Okay, Commissioner Lucero.
Here.
Commissioner Morando.
Here.
Commissioner Pava. Commissioner Toya. Is he on Zoom? Thank you. Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Commissioner Lawrence, can you lead the legions? The next matter is the approval of the agenda. Does staff have any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair, thank you. There are a couple of changes. So, Case Two and Four, those are both for sixty-three fifty Airport Road, General Plan Amendment and zoning. Those will be postponed until August, the August eighteenth meeting. They had a faulty public notice, so we had to take them off the meeting. And then eighteen forty percent of the La Conquistadora subdivision will be postponed to August eighteenth as well. That was noticed on the agenda.
Do any of the commissioners have any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll... It's for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Melissa, can you do the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner? Is she muted, or...? Yes. Thank you. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. The next is the approval of the July seventh twenty twenty-two minutes. And just as a reminder, to be able to vote on these minutes when you're present for the July seventh twenty twenty-two meeting or have reviewed the hearing. So, are there any changes to those minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes, and for the record, I reviewed all of the materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes, and I also reviewed all the materials as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Lucero?
Yes, and I have reviewed the materials.
Thank you. Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Next are findings and conclusions. There are four findings and conclusions of law, findings of facts and conclusions of law. And the first one, I guess we'll take them all individually. The first one is case number twenty twenty-two dash five two oh five, which is the St. Michael's Drive Master Plan Amendment. And I have one change to all of them. The, in the first paragraph, it says that it came for a public hearing on July seventh. It does not state that it also came for a public hearing on July twenty-one. So that needs to be added to the, these findings and all the other, the other three findings, too. Are there any other changes to the findings? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Okay, the next is case number twenty twenty-two five two oh six, which is the four five five St. Michael's Drive Cancer Center Development Plan. And again, just let me remind everybody, if they were not present at that hearing, Commissioner can vote if they have reviewed either the minutes, but there's no minutes, so you wouldn't have been able to review the minutes, but reviewed the hearing and reviewed all the materials on this matter. And again, this one, we need to add the hearing that was held on July twenty-one. Are there any other amendments to the findings and conclusions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Next one is case number twenty twenty-two dash five two oh eight, four five five St. Michael's Drive Cancer Center Height Variance. And again, this, these findings and conclusions need to be amended to add the hearing date of July twenty-one. Are there any other changes to these findings and conclusions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
And I will second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
And finally, case number twenty twenty-two dash five two zero nine, which is St. Michael's Drive Cancer Center Slope Variance. And again, we need to add the July twenty-one public hearing. Are there any other changes to these findings and conclusions?
Madam Chair. Should we clarify that this, these findings and conclusions support the denial of the variance? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So when we're voting, if we vote affirmative, we're voting for denial of the variance, we vote, no, we're voting for not denial of the variance?
No, in actuality, the only thing that we are voting on is whether or not these findings and conclusions reflect what was decided at the hearing and then all the information and the other things that are in them. So, Commissioner Smith, you can go ahead and vote on them, even if you're, you were opposed to the ruling. Because you're only, you're not voting, again, to affirm or deny the variance. You're voting to determine as to whether these findings reflect what was heard at the hearing and what was, the findings and the conclusions of law.
Commissioner, can you please speak into the microphone, Commissioner Smith? Thank you.
All right, please explain this again.
Perhaps the Assistant City Attorney can help us.
Commissioner, the findings of facts were, are in the packet that you've gotten. They should be a reflection of what happened at the meeting where you did vote, and they should reflect the vote that happened at that meeting. So you're just now voting to say, like with the minutes, that the findings are accurate reflection of what happened at that meeting? Does that make sense?
So a yes vote is affirming what happened at the meeting?
Correct. Like affirming that this is what happened at the meeting.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve this Chair Clow's amendment?
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava? Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
And next we'll move on to new business. And the only matter that we are hearing tonight is case number twenty twenty-two dash five three nine three, which is seven two six one Airport Road Development Plan. So we have staff's presentation.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is case number twenty twenty-two fifty-three ninety-three, seventy-two sixty-one Airport Road Development Plan, Orion West LLC agent, MBR, seventy-two sixty-one Airport Road LLC applicant. Request development plan approval to construct a two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand square foot of new construction for a two-hundred-and-twenty-one unit multi-family apartment complex. Project is a seven-point-nine-six acre lot in a zone C-two. This is within the Airport Road overlay and within the River and Trails Archaeological Review District. Land use department is recommending approval with the conditions of approval as outlined in this report. Those are located on page two, Conditions of Approval, Section Two, Table One, Conditions of Approval, and also in Exhibit A of the packet, which are the technical corrections. One motion will be required in this case. Approve or deny the development plan subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff. This request, again, is a development plan to construct two-hundred-and-twenty-one multi-family dwelling units on a total, or a total of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand square feet and related accessory amenities. The applicant has complied with subsection fourteen-three-one E, Pre-Application Conference, fourteen-three-one F, Early Neighborhood Notification Procedures, and fourteen-three-one H, Notice Requirements. Staff is recommending approval subject to the conditions identified in Section Two, Conditions of Approval, of this memorandum. The project is located in a C-two district. Surrounding properties include Riverside Mobile Home Park, the Vista Verde subdivision, the east, San Tierra Apartments also to the east, Santa Fe Country Club to the southeast, Geto Quinteta just directly south, Vista Puma Vera Primera subdivision to the southwest. Project is also surrounded by streets, Airport Road, Awarfria Street, and Camino, or Camino Juliana. The applicant has proposed a total of three-hundred-and-forty-eight parking spaces with twenty-eighty-eight parking spaces. The applicant is providing ninety-degree one-size-fits-all parking. This does include some small car parking spaces, which is not allowed with one-size-fits-all. The applicant will have to address those issues prior to filing the development plan. Again, when it comes to parking, the required amount is three-hundred-and-twenty-two parking spaces. That's based on code standards. The applicant has exceeded those parking requirements at three-forty-eight with twenty-eighty-eight parking spaces. Again, that may change as a result of the small car. But they, he's only got maybe six, a small car, six or eight. Development plan identifies twelve inverted U-type bike, bicycle parking. The requirement is only twelve. So he's got twenty-four bicycle spaces provided. So it does exceed the requirements of Chapter fourteen, and he's placed those bicycle parking racks throughout the development in order to accommodate the community that will use bicycles. There are two driveways proposed, one off of Awarfria Street and one off of Camino Juliana. The applicant has provided a traffic analysis, which is reviewed by the DRT, our traffic consultant. The consultant required the applicant to provide a study for the intersection of Constellation Drive and Airport Road, Airport Road and Awarfria, Airport Road and Camino Juliana, Camino Juliana and Awarfria, and Camino Juliana on Camino Vista Verde, along with the two driveway entrances to the development plan. The applicant's study said that there were no improvements that were needed as a result of existing conditions and proposed conditions. There were no requirements by our traffic consultant for additional infrastructure requirements. The applicant is also going to improve the sidewalk. That's, that's along Awarfria Street and Camino Juliana. There is no sidewalk on the Awarfria side, so that will be in addition. There is no trails around this property. However, there is a bicycle trail. This project will not impact those. And they have access to Awarfria. It is a shared street and bicycle par, travel lane. The applicant has provided landscaping throughout the parking or throughout the project, including open space centrally located in the development plan and providing a swimming pool. The lot coverage is twenty-six percent, minimum or maximum is sixty percent. So the applicant has complied with the lot coverage requirements for Chapter fourteen. Water and sewer will be provided by city utilities. Sewer is being extended off of Awarfria, and water is being extended off Camino Juliana, and both will enter the development. There are three fire hydrants that are going to be added to the area within the development. And as you can see, there are several fire hydrants throughout the area. Property is virtually flat. As you can see, there's nothing on the property. It's, it's, uh... They're going to add three drainage retention, detention ponds located to the southern portion of the property for drainage. And architecturally, the applicant is proposing somewhat of a pueblo-style architecture. The area outside of this, along Airport Road, is kind of a mix of territorial, vernacular. It's peppered with, with both industrial metal buildings along with other types of architectural styles. So it's a mixed use along Airport Road. The pueblo-style building does fit in with the existing architecture that's there. The applicant has addressed all of the necessary findings pursuant to Section fourteen-three-eight, which is development plan criteria, and fourteen-three-eight D, which are the approval criteria standards for development. The E and N presented many concerns from the neighborhood, from safety, security, uh, traffic along Camino Juliana, bottlenecking at Camino Juliana and Airport Road for traffic exiting, along with parking within the development. There are many people that didn't agree that the parking standards that the city has accommodated the development, even though the applicant has exceeded the parking standards required by code. And that will conclude the presentation by staff, and I will stand for any questions.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Escobal, I was just looking at the technical corrections. I had skimmed them before and was looking at it more closely. And I am not sure that the technical corrections in Exhibit A, as included in our packet, include all of the staff comments. And I was wondering, before we come to all of the staff technical corrections, and I was wondering if you could take another look at that and...
Which technical corrections were you referring to? Because we have some that are part of the conditions.
I am referring to Exhibit A.
I know, but which ones did I not include?
It appears that you include land use, public utilities, community health and safety, and then you repeat land use, public utilities, community health and safety.
Okay. That was probably an oversight on my part. But if we include the DRT comments listed in the exhibits, those are what we aggregate for Exhibit A. So if you approve or disprove, if you approve the, the application subject to conditions listed in Exhibit, in the Exhibit A, as well as Exhibit B, which are the DRT comments, then they will overlap and it will, it will correct that error.
Thank you, Mr. Escobal. That's the only clarification I had at this time. Thank you.
Any other questions, clarifying questions of the commission? Commissioner Pava?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mr. Escobal. I had a question regarding the Airport Road Overlay Zone. I think I recall that the staff report stated that the provisions of the overlay zone do not apply because this is a multi-family development, or something to that effect. And I'm wondering, because maybe that hinges upon a definition in Chapter fourteen about what is a detached, what is an attached multi-family development? Could you clarify for that, please?
Well, we looked at that as, I mean, Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Pava, I did look at that, and because this is a multi-family residential and has got many attached dwelling units, single buildings, we discluded it from requirement of the Airport Road Overlay. The Airport Road Overlay mainly addresses itself to commercial development, where it requires the applicant to force that front of the building to be facing forward, and facing forward Airport Road. It removes dual parking along that area. And then it also requires specific access from that to the, to the, to the front of the building. So as a multi-family unit, it gathers its access directly from the parking lot area as opposed from having to walk to the street and to access a store or the front of the store. So it, in this sense, for multi-family, it's not going to apply. And it hasn't, it hasn't been that way since that ordinance was adopted.
Thank you. So my, my follow-on question, because in the applicant's material, they, they state more than once that they do comply with the Airport Road Overlay Zone provisions, requirements, setbacks. So in, in your opinion, as staff, does it essentially comply with overlay zone provisions, such as height and setbacks, and anything else that was intended for the Airport Road to be different?
It wouldn't apply because the, the applicant has placed their drainage ponds up against the Airport Road Street, and they're required to have access from that front sidewalk to the front of the buildings. And they do not, because they're also going to be placing a fence along that perimeter, which would also prohibit any access along that sidewalk fronting Airport Road. But since they don't require compliance of the Airport Road Overlay, it, it doesn't really infringe upon them.
Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Commissioner Smith?
Chair, Mr. Escobal, do you have a, a number or an estimate as to what the payment in lieu of will be, given there's no affordable housing in this?
I do not. I'll let the applicant address that. I, I don't think that we have affordable housing here tonight, so the applicant will have to provide that, that estimate. I know that they did work with our Affordable Housing Department. That was required before they even came to this meeting.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and hear from the applicant.
While I'll be speaking, or whoever's speaking on behalf of the applicant, I can swear you all into the same time. Thank you. Please raise your right hands. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimonies you are about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And when you approach the microphone, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Madam Chair. My name is Nancy Long, and my address is eighteen hundred AO Pecos Trail in Santa Fe. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Nancy Long, as I stated, and I'm an attorney in Santa Fe and part of the team that's representing the applicant in this case. My comments will just be brief, and the planner will provide more details about this project. As you have heard from Mr. Escobal, the staff is recommending approval of this project and finds that it meets the development plan approval criteria that you have to consider. The property site is zone C-two, which is general commercial, as you know, and multi-family is a use permitted in the zone. The project also meets the development plan criteria that you consider whenever you do have a development plan before you. City staff has found that the application complies with city code subject to the conditions and technical corrections. And the applicant is in agreement with all of the conditions of approval and does agree to make the technical corrections. Staff also found that the applicant met the criterion that approving the development plan will not adversely affect the public interest, and that is by meeting all Chapter fourteen requirements and thereby serving the public interest. We submit that the project actually serves the public interest, and you will hear more about that in our presentation. It provides much-needed rental housing, the sidewalk improvements that you saw for safer pedestrian access, where they are lacking now. It provides significant open space within the project, more than is required by city code, and it does exceed the city's parking requirements, as you heard. Staff also found that the project meets the third criterion, that the use of buildings are compatible and adaptable to the abutting property and other areas, other properties in the area. And you did see some pictures in Mr. Escobal's report, and we will have more information than that in our presentation. But basically, along Airport Road next to, and fronting Airport Road next to this property, you go from Mobile Home Parks, Parks to this property to apartment project to another apartment project. It is compatible with everything that exists there, and it is a transitional buffer from the subdivisions other to the north, sort of to the back of the property in northeast. The project seeks no variances and fully complies with city code and is a permitted use within the zone. We would ask for your consideration and approval. And I will now turn it over to Brian Nenninger of Orion West, who's the head planner on this project.
For the record, I'm Brian Nenninger, Orion West, five thirty B, Arkell Road, Suite one hundred, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight-seven-five-oh-five. Madam Chair, and members of the commission, as I said, my name is Brian Nenninger, and I'm with Orion West, and we're the owner-agency representing the investor developer on this project. So the first thing that I want to do, and I'm going to pick this up, I think this is okay, is just kind of give you a deeper dive into the neighborhood. Mr. Escobal kind of got us started on that, but I just want to kind of show you a little bit what's going on in terms of what's immediately around our site. So as you see in the green, that's our seven-point-nine-six acre plus or minus site. Again, as Dan said, it's zone C-two, and it's within the Airport Overlay. And Commissioner Pava, we feel like that we do comply with the Airport Overlay, but there are some exceptions, because we are a multi-family project, is how we've looked at that. And let me back up. Sorry, shouldn't be hitting these buttons. And let me back up, sorry, shouldn't be hitting these buttons. So if you look to the north, in the sort of bluish color, that's the Vista Verde mobile home community. There's roughly 71 homes in that particular community. If you kind of go around and look at the purple, that's the Vista Verde subdivision. Those are roughly 57 homes. I think there's a lot that's yet to be built out, it could be 58. And that particular, those are all single-family homes. And then if you go to the south, you'll see San Tierra, and there are 86 apartments in that complex. You go a little bit to the right, you'll see Anasazi Village at 116 units. And you go all the way over here, this very large area, is the Riverside Mobile Home Community. And I didn't count those, and I'll tell you why. The, the reason that I didn't highlight Riverside, and I didn't highlight the Anasazi Village, I wanted to focus your attention, and Carl Vermillion, our, our traffic engineer's going to talk more about this, on the communities and the developments that directly impact Aguafria, Aguafria rather, and Camino Juliana. The other thing that I wanted to do with the, you'll see these kind of purple and then yellow circles, is just identify the intersections that are not lighted, those are the purple, and the intersections that are lighted is in yellow. So if you sort of look at where we're at, we have a lighted, full-service, I call it, left in, right in, right out, left out, all directions protected movements at that intersection. If you go to Camino Juliana, we do have a D cell lane for a left turn, but it is not lighted. So that's just kind of a, just kind of a lane. We, we may come back to the slide as, as we have questions. So as we zoom in a little bit and look immediately at our, our development in our area, I wanted to go back and, and talk about access. So again, we have the lighted intersection at Aguafria in Airport. We have the protective left at Camino Juliana in Airport. And then we have two, what we're again calling, full service in and outs into the complex. And I'll talk a little bit about that. That has evolved over time, with our initial ENN and feedback that we have from the neighborhood. So when I say full service, particularly the Camino Juliana entry and exit, there's quite a queuing lane. When you get to the gate, there is two-way in and out in both directions for the residents, but there's also a gate and a, and a sort of a side spot for visitors. So if anybody's coming to visit, they're not holding people coming in and out. They go out in their third lane, and then they call the unit that they're trying to reach, and that unit will let them in or not. And that's true for both, both access points. So I, I want to shift gears a little bit. We had talked about around 1,600 feet of additional sidewalks, going all the way around the perimeter of the property. So I wanted to kind of give just a quick view, looking down Aguafria from Airport, and you'll see there are no curb and gutters at this point, no sidewalks. This is just another view, looking southwest about midway. And then if we go down to the bottom photograph, you can see the San Tierra apartment complex, and you can also see that there is a curb there, but there is no sidewalk. So our project contemplates making that whole area much more walkable, and much more interesting from a pedestrian point of view. If you look down below, you see between the red lines, that's Camino Juliana, and we're looking north. And you'll see that between the curb and the sidewalk, we have a five-foot landscape buffer. Then we have a six-foot sidewalk, and then we move on into the property. The fence that you see here is roughly six feet, and it's a combination of open metal picket and pilasters. And so the idea here is that we're landscaping this area, which is, you know, roughly, probably around 12 to 13 feet, depending on where you're at, and making this a very interesting and walkable area for the local community. This sidewalk, of course, ties back into Airport, and then goes all the way around to Aguafria, and then Aguafria around back to Airport. The other thing I'd like to point out, and when we get to the architect, architecture piece, Mark Hogan will talk a little bit about this, we have quite a setback from the residents and the developments that are over here to the east here on Airport Road, and to the front of our building. So this is around 129 feet, but as we look, as we look, it stops here short. So there's at least 135 feet from building to building, which is just a nice setback that gives a little bit of breathing room along Camino Juliana, and that's why that was laid out in that way. And so again, as you look at this perimeter, we're bringing sidewalks all the way around, and they'll be lighted, and so there, there, there's not lights out there today, so a little bit of additional security. So kind of considering the landscape piece as well, not only, you know, we're bringing the sidewalks, as we're bringing the landscape, we're bringing trees. So there'll be some shading, that will also help soften this area and make this a more enjoyable area to walk. And I won't get into a lot of detail on the landscape, but suffice to say, like every other development in Santa Fe, we're using drought-tolerant plants, we're using passive irrigation whenever we can. And the one thing that's important, and Ian, our, our civil engineer, will talk a little bit about this, this area here between the Airport Road sidewalk and our fence line is owned by the City of Santa Fe. And what our project is proposing to do is, at, at our cost, is to basically develop and install all of that landscaping, use that as part of our detention, but also as passive irrigation, and be responsible to maintain that. So this is a little bit in keeping with the Airport overlay, and some of the goals and intentions of that overlay, in terms of improving and beautifying Airport Road. Okay, I'm going to turn this over to Ian Anderson, who's our civil engineer. He's going to address a few items that were left open in those conditions of approval, including parking and a few other things as well.
I am with Isaacson and Arthman. Our address is 128 Monroe Street, Northeast, Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87108. I just wanted to, yes, speak on some of the updates that we've been doing. We did receive a few last-minute comments last week, and we wanted to, you know, kind of update our development plan and make sure that we address those also. So right now, what we're looking at is current development plan. First comment we received regarded our open space requirement, how we met the common open space. And the second comment was our compact stalls, the smaller stalls that we included on-site. I have another exhibit that I'll, I'll show what we did. We ended up removing those compact stalls, and so that isn't a part of our development anymore. And then finally, our striping and signage plan. We didn't have one specifically for that, but we did show it on our paving plan, so I just wanted to show that and make sure that was no big deal. So the first exhibit is our open space exhibit. We calculated based off the number of dwelling units for our site, and that's for our multifamily residential requirements. In total, we were required to provide, or 55,250 square feet. We provided in the hatched green areas 130,000 square feet, meeting that requirement. Sorry. And then for our common open space requirement, it's actually just 50% of that overall open space we did provide. That totaled 65,000 square feet. In our center block here, we show that we have provided 75, or 74,000 square feet, meeting that requirement also. And then on this exhibit, we have our current site layout on top, previous site layout with those compact stalls shown on the bottom. We have removed those, so we feel that shouldn't be, I guess, held against us at this point. And then here's our site utility plan, again, just kind of showing how we're going to be served through the site. And I also wanted to note that our dry utilities are actually located along Camino Juliana, so as our design develops further, we'll have those connections shown there. And finally, our site paving and striping plan. It shows all our paving on-site, and then also our striping, so the parking striping, our ADA stall striping, and then crosswalks that will be involved in the site. With that, I'd like to turn it over to our architect.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the commission, nice to see you again. My name's Mark Hogan. My address is P.O. Box 23837, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87502. And you've heard a lot about the context, and I'm not going to labor that more. I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of our goals and objectives. We started off by studying the surrounding neighborhoods for context, and Brian, I think, talked about that pretty well. We also spent time listening to comments from the neighbors at the ENN, most of which had to do with height, some other concerns, but we originally had a fixed roof on this project. We went to a flat roof to try to bring down the apparent height. We also had a lot of sort of extruding balconies and things like that, which we simplified down. Our goal was really to kind of try to fit in, since we have multifamily apartments, single-family homes, and mobile homes, we wanted something unpretentious and just something straightforward, but also something that reflected some life. And so that's the elevation you see before you. We were working on scale, trying to keep it as low as possible, looking at distance from neighbors, reduce the height, simplify the architecture, and create a quality pedestrian environment, which I think is a really important part, not only for the residents, but also for the neighbors, since everybody that lives on that block gets to enjoy that. We easily meet the design points required. Our score is 240, required is 204, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to stand for them during that portion of the presentation.
All right, for the record, my name is Carl Vermillion. I'm at 7500 Jefferson Street, Northeast, in Albuquerque, New Mexico, 87109. Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I completed the traffic impact study for this development, and I'd like to go through a few of the findings that we found through that traffic impact study. So as an overall view of the traffic study, of course, this traffic study followed national standards that are in national documents, whereas intersections are evaluated by a grading system. So as you can see, the signalized and unsignalized intersections are graded from a level of service A through F, and they are graded upon the amount of delay at an intersection. So these intersections were analyzed as such, and I will get to those on the next slide. The development also followed national standards. There's, the Institute of Transportation Engineers have a documents and a portfolio of existing, existing developments around the country, in which they develop a, a category of different developments. This one was called multifamily housing, whereas in the country, after, after developments are built, there are traffic counts that are stored in this, in this catalog, which are utilized in, in developments. This development was, of course, used multifamily housing, and the entering and exiting vehicles was, were, were gathered from that catalog. So the intersections that were analyzed as part of the development, of course, centralized around the development, in the, in the center here, I'll go through those, through those intersections. So the first intersection here, Airport Road and Old Airport Road, also called Constellation Drive. The second, that first intersection, of course, is signalized. The second intersection, Airport Road and Aguafria Street, or Paseo del Sol, to the south, that one is, of course, signalized as well. Intersection three is Airport Road and Camino Juliana, which is a one-direction stop with Airport being free, with no stop control. Intersection four, Airport Road and Country Club, or San Felipe, which is also a signalized intersection. Intersection number five, Camino Juliana and Camino Vista Verde. Intersection number six was Aguafria and Camino Juliana. And intersection seven is that new site access, or the development onto Aguafria. So these intersections, we coordinated with the City of Santa Fe on these, and they were the ones that decided these intersections, and gave those intersections to us as, as a starting point to analyze, based on the development, the vehicles, and where they were, they would be anticipated to go. So as part of the traffic study, those exist, those intersections that I mentioned, existing counts were done to, to determine how many vehicles enter each of those intersections. Those counts were gathered on March 29th of this year. Those counts were taken throughout the day, and the, the national standard of traffic engineers shows that to analyze this intersection, these intersections, you look at the highest hour rate volume at each, each intersection, an AM hour, peak hour, and a PM peak hour. And those were analyzed as such. These show the existing intersections without the development, and you can see, based on that, those categories I mentioned previously, A through F, all of these intersections operate at a level of service C or better, meaning, meaning that these intersections don't have more than 20 seconds of delay in any of the AM or PM peak hours. With the development, a similar finding was, was, was gathered. The worst-case intersection of Airport and Camino Juliana was a level of service C with a delay of 19 seconds at the most. Overall, the City of Santa Fe has set guidelines for the level of service, and this minimum level of service is a D. So you can see that these intersections fall above that, better than that. So there were no improvements needed at any of the studied intersections. Excuse me, sorry. But there was one intersection, the intersection of Camino Juliana and Airport Road, where the existing apartments are, San Tierra apartments are, that the State of New Mexico has guidelines for where or when a right-turn lane, a dedicated right-turn lane should be at this intersection on Airport Road. The existing The existing traffic on Airport Road and Camino Juliana, they, by that New Mexico standard, which the city of Santa Fe has adopted, this intersection should have a deceleration lane or westbound Airport Road to Camino Juliana, a right-turn lane. The issue that is apparent by this image is that the right-of-way for Airport Road includes sidewalk and a small buffer, but the existing apartments butt right to the back of the sidewalk, and there is no room for that right-turn lane there. And this right-turn lane is warranted without our development. So, due to the right-of-way constraints at this location, that dedicated right-turn lane can't be built without due diligence in acquiring additional right-of-way at that location. So, that is the conclusion of my portion. Thank you.
So, Chair Clow and commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and finish up with a few things as we've kind of evolved. I just want to talk about what has changed and where we started. So, the first thing you've heard already tonight is the building height. So, we did start out with at least one building that we had as a four-story. It was a clubhouse. And obviously, after we spent some time and talking to the neighbors, we thought we needed to back off on that a little bit, so we dropped a story. And then, from there, as Mark Hogan pointed out, we also went through a flat roof design, because even with a pitched roof, we had quite an elevation at the peak of the roof. And, you know, the thing about a pitched roof is they average that roof line, and so you get a little bit more height out of it. And we thought, probably for two reasons, one, for reasons of architecture and style, we should go ahead and go with the flat roof. So, we did, and you could see that that dropped our height quite significantly, another five feet. The other thing that we did is add the full-service entrance off Aguafria, as I discussed. That originally was just an out, a right and left out, and we made that a full-service, just like Camino Juliana. And, you know, our thought process on that is that as people realize that there's a light right there at Airport Road in Aguafria, that's going to be residents' choice to get out and get out to the area quickly. We also did the five-foot landscape buffer. There were some comments around a better experience being protected from the street, and then the city also made that recommendation. We originally just had that along Aguafria. Then finally, we modified the architecture. Our original architecture was quite modern with the pitched roofs. It was more in keeping with what I would say would be an industrial or a rail yard feel, which is not really that uncommon down by tractor supply, but it's not really what's going on right around us. So, just trying to be sensitive to what people like to refer to as our Santa Fe brand and take more cues from part of our style in this development and this design is what we decided to do here. So, I want to, it's just been some time. So, you know, Nancy brought up, and I know that there'll be some folks that will want to visit about this a little bit, that might have different viewpoints, but we feel good about this project because it is housing. You know, I know that just a couple of meetings ago, Alexandra gave a presentation on affordable housing and affordable issues in general, and I thought it was a great presentation. It was also really enlightening. And one of the things that, you know, we want to talk about here is that in order to help the situation with housing, we need to take care of housing, not only in the affordable areas, but also market rate as well, because it all pushes downhill. So, if there's not enough market rate, that pushes down towards affordable. So, the answer is not less housing in one area and more than the other, it's more across the board. And so, that's something that we're providing here, is market rate housing. The other thing I'd like to say is that the developers of this particular project were the first group with approval of Casa Azul, which is a three-story, multi-family project at Meadows and Airport Road, that did the 15% affordable. So, they were actually, I think it's the only one that I know of, that actually incorporated that instead of just doing the fee and lieu. And I'll give you a little bit of perspective of why there and not here. One of the reasons is that's an opportunity zone. So, there are certain tax benefits to developing in an opportunity zone that help allow the developer a little bit more leeway to do that kind of thing. So, that's why they did it there. In this case, we don't have the opportunity zone, and we're also dealing with a situation where costs to build these things now are running, you know, where they were, $150,000 a unit, are now $210,000 a unit. So, it's kind of an economic calculation as well. We know, for example, as Alexandra said, with a 3% vacancy rate, that's almost nothing. You know, a healthy market would be closer to six or seven. And so, really, that's just turnover, people moving from one apartment to the other. So, we feel like this particular complex is a good infill project. It's a good use of that space. Three stories is in keeping with what's allowed in C2. It's definitely below the maximum height of 45 feet, and it'll serve a need. We know that with Los Alamos expansion, that they're really putting pressure on not only Santa Fe, but even into Albuquerque. So, this is one of those projects that could help a little bit with that. I think it's also important, and Commissioner Smith had asked about, what is our contribution? And so, if you look down a little bit here, you can see that we're $438,000 is our fee and lieu of contribution. And again, if you remember Alexandra's presentation, that money goes to good causes and good uses. It helps people get into homes, it helps subsidize rent. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail again, because this is right out of her presentation. But I think this is a positive benefit for the community. So, I want to just kind of conclude. You know, we feel like this is going to be a good project for the community for housing, for a safer street, sidewalk, pedestrian experiences, you saw, for a better-looking section of Airport Road with the landscape that we're going to do. We have in the area already a mix of different types of residences from affordable apartments, San Tierra, Anasazi Village are examples. And then we have our residences in Vista Verde. We have our residences in the two mobile home communities that are right there as well. So, this just rounds out the residential offering in that area. Just to also kind of follow up in what Nancy said, this project is allowed in the C2 general commercial district. We're not asking for any variances, and we're happy to comply with all of the technical corrections and conditions of approval that staff has put before us. And that concludes our presentations. We can stand for questions.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant that are like clarifying questions, no comments, or just more, you need more information. Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of brief clarifying questions. One for the civil engineer, there was the mention of removing the compact stalls, and I was wondering if that is affecting the number of parking spots at all.
So, yeah, we did remove, I guess, the three compact stalls that we previously shown on our development plan. We managed to reorient our drive aisle to preserve two of those three, so we just lost one.
Okay, wonderful. And as I recall, you do have an excess of parking, you're above the requirement, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then my only other clarifying question was, there was the discussion of the landscaping, the discussion of some trees and additional landscaping there. I was wondering if you could give examples of the sort of trees you're considering.
So, that is a good question. I need to pull up the landscape land for that. Locusts are not uncommon, and you've probably seen a lot of the honey locusts out there in that area in that design. I know everybody's getting away from purple ash these days because of a bug that's gone through, but if I can definitely follow up and get you the tree varieties that we intend to use, if I can get that to staff.
General statements are mine.
Yeah, thank you.
Those are my clarifying questions.
Commissioner Lucero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is also for the civil engineer. Can you speak to the reasoning for perimeter fence, and is that concurrent with other developments in the area?
The perimeter fence really is to control the site for security purposes. There are other perimeter fences a lot, or with neighboring apartments. Not sure if they are controlled access as we are proposing to be, but there are those perimeter fences too.
Okay, and is that caused for, I mean, when you've met with neighbors, does that come up as being an issue? I mean, I read it in some comments, and so I wonder if you could just address that.
Yes, Commissioner Lucero, it depends on the comments. We've gotten both. One is, we don't like fenced communities, and the other is, where's our fence? We want a fence for our community. So, what we hope to do, can you hear me? I'm sorry. What we hope to do is, by providing a metal picket fence, that there is a visual quality that it doesn't, you know, reach just like a solid wall. We do have a solid wall along Airport for noise and various reasons, and to help, you know, facilitate and accentuate really the landscape that's going to be there. But on Camino Juliana and Aguafria, it's all an open picket fence, so you could see what's happening. It just keeps you from walking, easily walking in, you know, to areas where people are trying to have their cars secure.
I have one more question. In reference to the bike racks, you know, I'm a cyclist, I appreciate all the bike racks, but I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to why you put bike racks in certain places, some of the, you know, the reasoning behind where they go.
Yes, so Chairwoman Clow, Commissioner Lucero, what we tried to do is just accommodate as many of those apartments as we could, so as many locations. You can see that they're all kind of spread out between various buildings, and our goal was just to accommodate our residents so that they all had an option for a bike rack. I'm not even sure if we have enough at this point. I think it could be more, given if you looked at Dan's slide and said, hey, there's no immediate trails, but there's lots of pedestrian ways, and, you know, we would hope that there'd be plenty of cyclists that would be using all those areas.
Thank you.
Jason, you have a comment?
Chair, yes, thank you. I'd like to add a clarifying point, thank you. So, during the building permit, we'll make sure that, the building permit process will make sure that those bike racks are located at least 50, they can't be located any further than 50 feet from a main entrance. We'll ensure that they, you know, they are close to those entrances, and I think we may have a couple of them that aren't quite there, but we'll verify that during building permit.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Pava.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My questions are primarily addressed to the applicant to follow up and clarify some things that were presented. Regarding building heights, can you tell us which of the six buildings are either two stories and which are three? And the reason I ask is I'm wondering if you are aware of any shadows cast on adjoining developments? I know that there are street, you have the two streets and Airport Road, which might mitigate that.
Yes, so I'm going to, let's see, let's just start with this drawing, which is the development plan, and let's see if the cursor is showing up. So, I'm going to put my cursor over these buildings and make sure you guys understand, everyone understands, the commissioners, what we're looking at. So, this first building is Building A, and that is what we call the clubhouse building. And that building is three stories, and it is 39 feet, six inches. As we look and move through the other buildings, Bs and Cs, these other five buildings are actually 38 feet, six inches. They're a foot smaller or shorter, and that's because the clubhouse has a taller first floor to accommodate some of the community needs. Then there are three other buildings, and you see the cursor over this set, this set, and this set, that are two-story. And each of these three buildings has one unit, one rental unit above, and there are garages below. So, those buildings are less than, they're in the 28 feet, six inch range for the one that's ADA, and they're another foot shorter for the ones that are not. Does that help with the height question, Commissioner?
Yeah, but from your perspective as an architect, when you look at the massing of the buildings and sun angles and the adjacent developments, and particularly the single-family that is up there to the corner, is there any shadowing impact, say, at late in the day? I would think it would be later in the day.
Well, so, as we were talking about, there's quite a distance, if you look at from the front, the face of this building over, as we look at the first buildings. And so, we're estimating that's at least 135 feet, and as you also see, there's sort of this V as you look at how these buildings are affecting the impact of that community. We have not done a shadow study per se. I mean, I think what we would be talking about, of course, is from the west. We're not really worried about from the east. So, in the evening, you know, it may be possible on this corner, but it's probably not that likely. They're just so far over. I don't see that you're going to feel like it's evening, and I'm in my backyard, and I've got this dark space that I would not normally have, otherwise have. I find that hard to believe with that kind of distance.
The follow-on to that would be, in Santa Fe's climate, as opposed to Dallas, where some of these concepts seem to be popular and from, we have ice and snow in the wintertime, and our low sun angles also on north-facing sides of buildings and on east-facing sides of buildings. Do you, as an architect, think that those problems are ameliorated with the design of the site?
Well, there's no doubt that the angles are lower for the north and south-facing sides of the building, but again, I have a hard time seeing that kind of impact, based on the distance we are from our adjacent homes, and that includes the trailer homes to the north.
So, if some spaces are rendered unusable, partially usable, which happens in Santa Fe, although we do have a surplus per code, is there a, typically with this property manager or this kind of a development, do we have something about snow and ice removal?
You know, just from a level of service for your customers, you have to remove snow and ice to keep everybody safe. The liability issues just all by themselves, if you don't clear sidewalks and your parking lots are quite significant, and the insurance carrier is going to require it. So, the answer to that question is yes.
Thank you for clarifying that. We have had issues in other parts of town where isn't thought of until something, an icicle falls on somebody, and has happened.
Yeah.
And these are taller buildings for Santa Fe. I have a question about recycling. I saw in the neighborhood notice comments something about recycling. Is the complex going to have provision for recycling if tenants wish to do it, and if so, how?
So, currently, we do not have a provision for recycling, and it is not required. That does not mean that once we select our operator that that does not happen. Just means at the moment, we do not have plans built into this particular application.
My final question is, can you give us an idea of the range of the rents? And I ask this because it has been stated that this is one asset that serves in the quote-unquote "public interest." And in Santa Fe, we are all aware of the need for the missing middle housing and developments like this, as you've made the case, what with the growth of Los Alamos, and they're externalizing their growth onto Santa Fe and whatnot. So, I'm curious about the rental range, if that can be done. I know you've done a pro forma, so maybe you have, give us an idea.
Safe to say, around $2 a square foot would be pretty, would be pretty close. If the average, if the average unit here is around 901 square feet, obviously, if three bedrooms are bigger and some one-bedrooms will be smaller, you know, that's around $1,800 a month. So, that's just kind of a rough estimate. It'll go up, it'll go down based on the units themselves.
Thank you for bringing up my questions.
No, thank you, Commissioner Pava.
Any other questions? Yes.
Madam Chair, yes. For the applicant, yeah. Hi. So, my question is if you have anything you could share for us at this time on how you're meeting water conservation and water harvesting?
Yeah, so the, the, probably the primary areas, and let me go back down to the landscape slide. If you look at this whole area along Airport Road, so obviously, we're, we're taking advantage of that as a detention area, but it's also passive irrigation. So we take advantage of those low areas. We divert water into those areas so that there's passive irrigation instead of just always active irrigation. Obviously, when things are dry, we'll be irrigating. But when things are raining, especially like, we've been blessed to have some of that lately, we can take advantage of that. Not only in this front area along Airport Road, but we also have a detention area in the back between these two buildings. And just throughout the property, we have various swales or low areas kind of along these sidewalks. So that's, those are all opportunities to catch, you know, basically as much water as you can before it leaves the site. So, and that's getting to be pretty much, I would say, the standard operating procedure now for people that are doing landscape in Santa Fe is, is the passive water harvesting.
And no cisterns will be used?
We do not have cisterns in, in design to do this particular setup.
And another point of clarification, you mentioned before the, the reason you were going in lieu of affordable housing. And I want to make sure I understand your statement correctly. You're basically saying because of increase in construction cost, that fee is less than you'd have to pay.
That is correct. Yeah, we would lose, you know, it's just economics. And, you know, Alexander did a great job in her presentation, but I would respectfully submit that to help Alexander out, we need to make some changes in the city code to make this, this, you know, for, you know, right now, the way it works is you make decisions based on economics.
My, my final question, the change in the façades and the roof, was that entirely in response to the neighborhood?
It was partly in response to the neighborhood and also to the city. I think in that section, we had, I think I said, both neighbor and city feedback. So we had some discussion about the architecture and does the architecture really fit into the surrounding neighborhood? And we took that to heart and redesigned it.
Is it right that the old design is not in the public record?
I, I think it must be. I think it must be because we originally submitted that with our original application.
I didn't, I didn't see it.
Well, I, I can also tell you, the old design, Commissioner Rondo, with the inch roofs was actually a more expensive design. We thought that it was, we originally thought that it would be a nicer approach because there are a lot of flat roofs. But at this, at the end of the day, it just felt too out of character, too far away from Santa Fe. Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up to public comment? If not, we'll go ahead and move to public comment. So anyone from the public that would like to speak, please stand, stand up so you can be sworn in.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimonies you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And when you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
So you come on up and, and we will first do public comment for people that are present here, and then we'll open it up to any comment on Zoom. And I see there's already one hand raised. So come on up, if all three of you want to come up and just sort of line up over there by the podium.
I have David Morton as the first person on the list.
Okay. And please state your name for the record and also your address. And we are, we limit comments to two minutes.
All right. David Morton, 3957 Camino Vista Verde, Santa Fe, New Mexico, 87507. Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is David Morton, and I am the President of the Vista Verde Homeowners Association. Our neighborhood of 57 homes has a border on Camino Juliana, and we have continuing concerns regarding the proposed development. You are planning on making an existing bottleneck on Camino Juliana much worse. You do not seem concerned about anything or anybody outside of the gated community. Even before you developed this property, traffic flow on Camino Juliana has been a constant problem. And that is still where one of the two entrances to these apartments is to be located. Your packet of information about the proposed development still does not address overflow parking. And this after two Zoom meetings where you received strong input in this regard. Your studies and massive data collection seems all to indicate that your project is moving forward with all proper permits and approvals. The 269 pages of exhibits all support the project moving forward. But your data collection has chosen to ignore those who will be most affected by this development, your potential neighbors. All we have received, being propped up by the city, is the developer's middle finger. The Vista Verde Homeowners Association vehemently opposes this development.
Thank you. Chair Clow, the next individual is Joanna Lavetti.
I have a minute and a half of comments prepared, but I have two procedural questions. Did I ask those for you first?
Oh, sorry. First state your name and address for the record, please.
Joanna Lavetti, 7221 Calle Jenna. My first question is, I uploaded our comments to the site, and I'm just wondering if you, everybody got that?
Yes. Okay. It's part of the record.
Okay, great.
A part of the record, re, all reviewed.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then my next comment is just regarding your question, Mr. Lucero. The people who responded when you asked about the fence, the neighbors did object to the fence. The ones who's asked for a fence was in response to their fence, not that we want a fence. Okay, there's a clarification on that. Madam Chair and Commissioners, I'm Joanna Lavetti, a homeowner on a street next to the lot. Let's talk about profits, because that's what this proposed development is all about, isn't it? Profits. Because if it was about doing the right thing, we wouldn't even be here. There's a term in your package, "public interest." It says, "Public interest is not specifically defined in Chapter 14." That's interesting. How is it defined? We homeowners do not feel that you care about our public interests. If you did, you'd have addressed our concerns as we laid out in the community meetings. And so I ask myself, why is that? The answer is profits. We already have two apartment complexes in our neighborhood, both only two stories high. We proposed Orion, not build more than two stories, but we were ignored. And while 348 parking spots meets the codes for 221 units, that's 1.57 spaces per apartment. Of course, there will be overflow onto our streets. Again, I say profits. 221 units on eight acres is over 27 dwellings per acre in our neighborhood that averages seven. And how is it that the city allows them to import water from elsewhere beyond the city usage limits? Why? Profits. On affordable housing, as you've all mentioned, the department requires affordable units, yet you're allowing them to pay a fee in lieu of providing affordable housing. Why not make them do it? Profits. Where is the profit to us? Yet another out-of-state outfit come in here telling us what we need. These carpetbaggers take people's money and don't put it back into Santa Fe. We object to this whole profit scheme. Do the right thing, please. Do not approve this complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Clow, the next person on the list is John Fairchild.
My name is John Fairchild, and I'm the President of the Vista Verde Mobile Subdivision right near this project. My address is 194 Calle Lazo Irrante. And first of all, I have to say that this project here, we're having situations now, like I said, with, they, once again, we've talked about the overflow of cars and in the streets, a lot of these pictures don't show now. If you're to go there now, you'll see that whole street lined up with cars from the overflow from the apartment complex that's there now. The owner of that complex also admitted he has situations with all the parking issues and the overflow with the traffic we're having there. Riverside too, we're having issues. I, in that, I myself, as a president there, with my own funds, I'm going to have to build a fence because we have a little park there with basketball courts, that I'm having cars actually drive through there because there's so much traffic from Riverside and from those apartments right next to the housing there. They actually drive through there, cars. We're having cars parked also in my park there. We have semi truck parked right on there. And if you see that street, once this development comes in, it curves this way. So once those come in, that's going to start being a danger because I know cars are going to be parked along there, and it's going to cause a lot of problems that we have now. And it would be nice, I know you see pictures, but it would have, if you'd go out there and really see how bad it is out there, and it is a very bad area with the overflow and all the cars that are parking on the site. So I know with this project, it's just going to make things a lot worse for all of us. And I think that's about all I have to say. I don't want to go through all the other studies and so forth. But as Santa Feans, and I've lived there for 28 years, this is just like I said, a project right now that we don't definitely need in that area right now. There's a lot of housing coming up right now, and that's great. Maybe housing, if they built in there instead of apartments, would be a plus, affordable housing in that way. But apartment complex, definitely not. I mean, it's, you've got to see it in life and photos. And I wish one day you guys got there and say, you know what? This just doesn't work for this area. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Clow, the next person we have is Patrice Chavez?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Patrice Chavez. I was born and raised here in Santa Fe, and I purchased my home at Vista Verde Community 20 years ago as a single parent. Within a two-mile radius of the requested development, there are over 10 massive apartment complexes, either complete, being built, or in the beginning stages. We don't need more. We voiced our concerns about additional crime in our neighborhoods, increased traffic, speeding, overcrowding of our public schools, police and fire safety, lack of water for the project, and disturbing our beautiful sunset that right now we see daily, but no longer will be able to with the three-story building being built by the development. The biggest concern for me, in addition to those mentioned above, is the entrance and exit that will be on Camino Juliana after several requests that it not be there. This is a very small road, about 200 yards, that already has four existing entrances and exits. One of our community entrances is right across where they plan to put their gated entrance. And so we can anticipate all of their tenants driving into our community, speeding and crowding our streets that we've had very calmly in our community for the last 20 years. In addition to the concerns that I share, we have a bus stop where our children get picked up daily on Camino Juliana. Our mailboxes are immediately across where they're planning their entrance and exit. When it rains and snows, Camino Juliana doesn't drain on either side. There's masses amounts of water regardless of the amount of rain that comes through. I'm almost done. There is no light at Camino Juliana and Airport Road, as has been mentioned several times, and it will contribute to more traffic accidents and could possibly end in death for somebody in our community due to the high volume of traffic. Camino Juliana with multiple potholes does not have the infrastructure in place to support the additional traffic that will occur with this development and with one of their entrances and exits being there. I'm disappointed that Mr. Escobal, on behalf of the City of Santa Fe, did not raise this concern. I ask first that you deny the development, but at the very least, hold off on any type of approval until you all can look into this very serious situation further. And as my community member mentioned, I ask all of you to take a drive out there and to look at the area and look at the road that we are concerned about because it really is a safety issue and a quality of life issue for all of us that have made that area our home for the last 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. So anyone else from the public here to speak? If not, we'll move to Zoom.
Chair Clow, I just want to direct anyone on Zoom to please raise your hand, the little hand function, and keep it raised. I will call on people in order, that when their hand is raised, you'll be invited to talk and allowed to unmute yourself one at a time. Thank you. Also, sorry, please, before you speak, just state your name and address for the record and be sworn in. Thank you. And I have Dan Terlucki, please, if you can unmute yourself. Dan, it looks like you're unmuted. Go ahead. Dan, I'm sorry, we can't hear you. Is there? Okay, we'll move on. Sorry. I have Ernest Madrid.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please state your name and address for the record and be sworn in, please. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Ernest Madrid. I live at 7113 Calle Jenna, Santa Fe, 87507.
Thank you. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the most important issue is water, okay? Every year, I get a letter from the city telling me that I can use only a certain amount of water during the afternoons. We, the members of this community, we're the taxpayers. We pay the taxes, we pay the water. This addition that's coming up is going to bring at least 600 people. That's a lot of water to be used. In addition, you guys- In addition, you guys, the Planning Commission, just approved a couple of medals, those apartments there, and then you also have another one coming up. Water is the issue. We must stop building and find out how much water is available. Oh, this project's on, oh, it's a beautiful project on this and that. But the water is the most important thing. There's no water. With 600 people taking showers every day, and that's a small estimate. It's 400, 200, that's a lot. You, the Commission, have to wait and say, this cannot happen. The neighborhood doesn't want this for other reasons. The majority of the people are saying water is the problem. What is gonna be done? What, what is, the, what do we, how do we resolve the water issue? Period. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Madrid. Chair Clow, I see that Dan Turelucky still has his hand up.
Let's try to get...
I'll try him again. Yep. Dan, you should be able to unmute yourself. I see that you're unmuted. We cannot hear you. Dan, if, if we're not gonna be able to get this sorted for you, there's also a phone number to call in to participate in the meeting that is posted on the agenda tonight. So, I would recommend trying to utilize that.
Or do you have that phone number you can give him?
I can, yeah, let me have my colleague here pull it up for me. All right. So, we have it here. Let's see. So, by phone, you can call 1-669-444-9171. And the webinar ID is 875-6886-1134. And again, that information is available on the posted agenda for this evening's meeting. Okay, Dan, I apologize for not being able to hear you over the Zoom right now, but we will move on to Lynn W. And Lynn, I will allow you to talk. If you please state your, you should be able to unmute yourself, Lynn. And please...
Yes.
Thank you. And please state your name and address and be sworn in for the record. Thank you.
Okay, hi. My name is Lynn Wazaluski and I currently live at 3941 Camino Vista Verde. I've been living in that place for 21 years.
Thank you. Let me swear you in. Do you swear...
Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to reiterate what everybody else has talked about with the parking and the traffic on Camino Juliana. Another thing I wanted to mention too is, have they thought about the educational impact of the schools in the area? I'm a teacher in the public schools and the downside schools are very, very packed with students. So, that's something I was thinking about. Excuse me. Also, the concern I have is, is probably, sorry, I'm having a lot of feedback in my, in my phone, so it's hard to focus. The parking where we have our mailboxes is going to be right where the entrance for this apartment complex is. That's gonna be an issue. Right now, it's really hard sometimes to, to stop and park there and get your mail. We also have buses in the morning and trying to get out on Airport Road in the morning is very difficult, especially if you're going to be turning left. So, I just wanted to bring up those points and let everybody know that I am not in favor of this apartment complex. Thank you.
Still, Chair Clow.
Hello?
Oh. Who's that?
Hello?
Is that Dan?
This is, this is Dan Turelucky, finally.
Hi, hi, Dan.
I apologize.
No, it's great to hear you. Can you please just state your name and address and be sworn in for the record before you begin your comments? Thank you.
All right. My name is Dan Turelucky. My address is 201 Bradenton Avenue, Dublin, Ohio, 43017.
Thank you. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You may proceed.
Okay. Commissioners, I apologize. Brand new technology, just couldn't get it to work. I am the owner of the Santierra Apartment Complex, which is directly across the street from this proposed development. We bought the project. It was an existing project. I'm sure you're well aware of it. And it was a project that had 94 apartments. And when we bought it, we, we knew immediately that the, the project was under, grossly underparked and that the, because it was underparked, people were parking in the drivelines and creating a public safety hazard. And we had reports back from EMS and police and fire that said, you know, they could, there were times when they could not get an EMS vehicle into the project. To solve the problem, we decided at our own cost to tear down an eight-unit building. So, we reduced it from 94 to 86. We also then tore down the 100, 10,000 square foot community building that was not being utilized and relocated it to a smaller office with a smaller community space that would address the needs of our tenants. We then incre, and the whole purpose of it was to increase the circulation pattern within the apartment complex and to increase parking. We were able to get it to about two spaces per unit. I repeat, two spaces per unit. We have, we have had a continual parking problem at two spaces per unit. To the point where we are going to remove some of the common area and a shade structure just to add 14 additional spaces. Hopefully, that with the addition of 14, we will solve our parking problem. I do not have a problem with this apartment project being built. In fact, it will only add value to my apartment project. So, I, I don't want to say that I am not in support. And I also don't believe that it is competition for us as we are, as we are a 100% truly affordable housing project that was developed under the Affordable Housing Program of the state of New Mexico. So, all of our, all of our units are dedicated to people making a working wage. So, their, their, their market rate project will not, will not affect us. So, I don't have that axe to grind. But what I can tell you is, I have been developing in Arizona and New Mexico for 35 years. We own and operate and develop 35-plus apartment projects. I have projects in Los Alamos. I have projects, obviously, in Santa Fe. I have them in Las Cruces. I have them in Silver City. I have them in Gallup and I have them in Plourdington. And ev, in every one of those apartment complexes, we strive to get to at least two spaces per apartment. I think it's ridiculous to assume that people living in apartment complexes, for the most part, are very seldom single individuals. They usually are couples, couples with children. They own two cars. They just do. So, my problem with this apartment project is that it is done, it has been conceived under one purpose, to maximize the number of units. Because my guess is, the project will be built, it will be filled, and it will be flipped and sold. And it is sold on a per-unit basis and that's what generates the most amount of money. So, I do, I must absolutely stress that this, that this project is underparked. And to make matters worse, a number of the parking spaces are garage spaces. So, those are private spaces.
Mr. Turelucky, please, please wrap up your comments, sir. Thank you.
Okay. I think all this, all this is going to do is force more traffic out onto Camino Juliana and onto Alafria. Those part, that upstream parking will create nothing but a traffic nightmare and a safety concern. So, I highly recommend that you look at this as a planning and zoning commission and say, there's just not enough parking on site. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Clow, we do not have an interpreter available right now unless there's somebody in the room, but... I, I also, if somebody additionally would like to speak on the Zoom, please raise your little, at the bottom, raise the Zoom hand, if you will, please.
Only two hands raised are the two individuals that have already spoken. Is that correct?
What's, what's the name of the individual that is on Zoom? Gary Chapman. Okay. Hi. Okay, we have at the bottom. I do not see a Gary Chapman on the Zoom. I'm sorry.
And I do not see any more hands raised?
I do not see any more hands raised, no. We did have a notice that staff on Zoom could help translate as, if needed, if he, but if he's not there.
The notice provided that if someone needed translator, they needed to request it beforehand.
Correct.
So, that we'd have a translator here.
Yeah, we request a five-day notice.
And no one, no one requested it.
I did not receive any requests, though.
So, I do not see any more hands raised. We'll close the public section of this meeting, public comments section of this meeting, and I will open it up to the Commission for questions and comments. Mr. Pava.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question for Mr. Escavell. So, this parcel is zone C2, correct? How long has it been zone C2?
I did not look at the ordinance when it was changed. I think it, it used to be the old Albertson site, so Albertson's was looking at this and they did purchase it to put a shopping center there, but then they pulled out.
Yeah, because C2 is community commercial, which is for things like shopping centers, like grocery stores, like big grocery stores, right?
Well, C2 allows a variety of uses, including multi-family residential.
Is there an upper limit to density for multi-family in a C2 zone?
There is not. It's all performance-based.
Performance-based. Can the Planning Commission regulate density as a function of the development plan review?
Yes. There, we just need to make sure that in that, we're not being arbitrary and capricious.
Okay. Regarding the, the ingress egress, one on Juliana and the other on Alafria, is there a requirement that a development such as this have more than one ingress egress and is that why there are two? And if so, could both of the ingress egresses be on Alafria, for example? Was that something that was reviewed and discussed?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, the applicant did propose these ingress egress requirements and I believe the Fire Marshal has a requirement that, and a threshold given a certain number of building units where they require two points of access. Again, we did look, our, our traffic engineers did look at all of the intersections and did not find a problem. We do have our traffic consultant ready to answer any questions should this Commission wish to ask them any questions. They're on Zoom right now.
Parking seems to come up time and again because we're auto-dependent and yet, this development more than complies with current city codes, correct?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, that is correct, per our ordinance standards.
In, in your opinion, looking at the site plan, is there any flexibility in modifying the ingress egress on the Juliana side so that it wouldn't directly impact the mailboxes for the development on the other side of the street?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, I think the mailbox issue could be resolved by the applicant. They would have to go through the post office to address why they're moving it, but the mailboxes probably could be, could be moved to a, a different location if the applicant wished to work with the neighborhood on where to place it.
My final question, thank you, Mr. Escavell. My final question may be more appropriately addressed by Mr. Kluk. We've heard about maybe the need for some, some enforcement, parking enforcement, semis are parking, whatnot. I'm wondering if in your staff meetings with other city departments, you might convey these concerns to the police department for enforcement?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pava, would you mind expounding upon that a little bit? I'm not sure I understand the question.
In your role as a department head, can you discuss this matter perhaps with the police department and others who would survey this area to, to consider parking enforcement if there are violations to parking? For example, large semis, commercial vehicles that maybe shouldn't be parked there, that maybe they are allowed to be parked by city code. I'm just mentioning it because I clearly heard this is an issue from all the people presenting in the public comments.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pava, typically, those issues are addressed through complaints, response to complaints and enforcement, but yes, we can definitely bring that up and try to be, you know, more proactive about it. As I, I'll absolutely bring it up.
Thank you very much for your consideration. End of my questions.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Okay. So, I have a question for the developer. How many affordable... Um, how many affordable units did you, did you offset with in lieu of?
So Commissioner Faulkner, I'm not sure that, um, I totally understand the question. We.
So how many affordable units did you, like, what's the math on the affordable unit? Like, how many did you buy your way out of by using in lieu of?
Um, I don't, I, I can't answer that for you at this point in time.
Does staff know the answer to that question?
Uh, no, no, I didn't look at that. I just relied on our Affordable Housing Department to address those issues. Usually that question doesn't come up. According to some of the applicant's staff, they're saying they offset at 33.
Thirty-three apartments. So, and that came to like roughly, what, 425,000, something like that?
It was 438,000, Commissioner Faulkner.
438? And so what's the average cost of your two-bedroom apartment?
Uh, right now, we're looking at something in the neighborhood of 250,000.
No, I mean, like, if someone was gonna rent it, what would they be renting it for?
So, uh, right now, we're using numbers that are in the $2 square foot range. So, um, a typical two-bedroom is probably around 1,200 square feet. So you could look at a price that was around $2,400.
Okay, so thi- this is where we're running into a problem and why the use of in lieu of right now is not. I, I have trouble seeing projects like this as a community, as beneficial to the community in the sense that you roughly got rid of 33 units, but only paid enough money to, so, the in lieu of programs use to offset the costs of people who can't afford to rent market value apartments. And, um, the theory is you get the in lieu of money, then people apply to use it and that gets them back into the market value apartments. But the amount of money that was contributed by this project would only get roughly, and these are approximations, maybe 13 families into apartments. So that leaves a gap between 13 and 33. So it's, we're not doing a service. We're actually displacing people who can't afford market value apartments to the difference of 33 to 13. And so thi- this is where I, I struggle with projects of this kind. The other issue I have is that apartment complexes are the gateway into getting homeownership. And there are almost no apartments being built that are in the affordable range. And I know this because I've been apartment hunting with my son and my nephew. And so that's just something I'd like the commission to consider, is that the in lieu of fee that they paid, and this isn't this developer's, they're, they're not the only ones doing it. And I have nothing against this developer directly. But it's, it's a flaw in the system that they, they use in lieu of and got out of 33 apartments that will be affordable, but that in lieu of only compensates for 13. Does, am I making sense to anyone? Like, there's a gap between need and what the in lieu of program is accomplishing as a strategy where it comes to apartments. And so I, I just struggle with being okay with greenlighting endless apartment building without any consideration for, that we're digging ourselves into a deeper and deeper hole where affordability is concerned, that I, at some point, we will not be, be able to get out of. And the other question I have for the developer, do you intend to sell this apartment complex to a national chain when it's fully developed and rented out?
At this point, they intend to develop it. I don't, I can't speak to the developer what they'll do for two to three years from now.
Are any of these apartments, are they, would they qualify to become condominiums?
I think the answer to that question is no.
Okay. All right, again, I think the project looks smart and this isn't necessarily about you as the developer. It's just something I'd like to point out to the commission that there's a huge, like, in lieu of isn't capturing what it needs to be capturing as a mechanism to reach affordability. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all.
Yeah. Madam Chair, could I respond? Just one moment. So Commissioner Faulkner, thank you, first of all, for your comments. Um, I kind of alluded to that earlier that we do have some issues with the code and this drives developers to take the fee-in-lu-er route unless there's an opportunity zone or some other mechanism that helps make that work. Again, this particular developer is probably one of the only ones that has done something other than the fee-in-lu-er for an apartment project. And that's fairly recent. Uh, the second thing that I would say is that I still think it's probably why we need affordable housing and there's no doubt we need much more of it. We also need market rate. Because if you go only and try to solve affordable, you'll never get it solved unless you also try to keep up with the market rate requirements. It's just, if, if you review Alexander's, uh, presentation, I think she was pretty clear about that as well. Thank you.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Sure.
The response I would have to that would be that we should be looking at building apartment complexes that require X amount of affordability and that would solve both problems. That's like we do in single-family dwellings. Um, we have, we have an amount that we, that, I think it's 30, 30, 30 roughly, uh, that we do in single-family dwellings. If we don't start moving towards having that same approach to apartment complexes, we, we will not be able to dig ourselves out of the affordability mess.
I think your comments, I think your comments are well taken. I think what also needs to be considered is the fact that this project is able to do a fee-in-lu, because that's what the statute, the ordinance provides. But also, um, from what I've heard is that when there was a requirement of affordable apartments as opposed to fee-in-lu, there were no apartments that were being built because none of the developers would come forward and do it. So it's, it's, I think, a delicate balance to, um, get a developer to be able to do affordable apartments because it's, it's a lot, it's expensive and it's also a lot to manage. And so I think the city needs to look at it more. Um, and I think when they did the fee-in-lu, there was a crisis in terms of a major need for apartments. So it's something that needs to hopefully be looked at. And I don't think there's really an easy solution. Because if we go ahead and go back to the way it was, then, um, you know, there'd be a crisis of no new apartments being built if it's not done appropriately. Because, um, people, developers build to make money, not to subsidize, um, housing needs of the community. That's where government needs to come in.
No, I agree, Madam Chair. And I, my, I would only suggest that we take, that we remember that this in lieu of formula isn't quite hitting the mark. And my general opinion is that we need to approach it with a scalpel and not a sledgehammer, right? Like this, there's a lot of nuances attached to it. But the, what led to in lieu of, there were other things happening outside of just not apartments being built. There was a recession. There was a whole bunch of things happening. And a lot of the apartments had been converted to condominiums. So it's a little more complicated than developers just not wanting to build, or just not choosing to build affordable. And we, we're kind of in that situation now and I recognize that. But this is something that's gonna be my new soapbox, um, is that we really need to start looking at the formulas we're using to achieve our affordable housing goals are not hitting the mark. And so we need to work with the developers and with the city to come up with a, a plan. I mean, we're, we're in this together and the community needs to be involved as well. And I'm just, I'm just gonna raise it every so often to remind ourselves that, that, you know, we're not hitting the mark. We're not even close. And so, that's, that's the only point.
I agree, it's important because clearly apartments that are 1,800 to 2,200 dollars a month are not, um, going to provide housing for a good majority of the people in Santa Fe. So something else needs to be done. Uh, Commissioner Smith.
Um, Chair, I just wanted to note that for the record, I concur with what Commissioner Faulkner is saying, what you are saying. And, and I hope that we can find a way, and in our purview, to do a full review of all the different ways we're dealing with affordability or not. I very much appreciate the developers, the builders' comments earlier that, um, there are rules they're gonna play by and the rules are in the code and the code hasn't been changed. And so, there you go. I get that. But I think this is a critical issue.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Chair. Um, and, and I would say that I appreciate this conversation and I also agree with the sentiments that have been expressed. I did want to ask the developer team another question or two that are, that came out of the public comment that I wanted to make sure that you had considered, find out if you had any thoughts about it. Um, it, it seems to me that one of the biggest public comments that we heard about that was, that was directly related to this development was the possibility of overflow parking. And if you have residents who are unable to find a spot within your property, I was wondering if you had considered that, planned for it, done any analysis of it, if you could speak to that at all?
I would say that we have considered that and we have talked to, you know, various commissioners. Sorry, is that better? There we go. So I would say the answer is yes, we have considered this. One of the things that I think is different about our complex versus San Tierra and what Mr. Trilecki was talking about is that all have the units are two and three bedrooms. Fifty-five percent of ours are single bedrooms. It's a different mix. It's a different requirement. I understand Mr. Trilecki's need and I actually appreciate what he's trying to do, but I just think it's apples and oranges. The second thing that I would say is that we have talked about what would happen if there were parking allowed along Aguafria, parking allowed along Camino Juliana. I think the neighbors are already saying they don't like this, they don't want this. Um, we've talked about, we can enforce the parking. We could be part of that group that calls the police and does not allow parking on Camino Juliana and Aguafria. But then, you know, neighbors are saying, well, that means that you just make them park along our street where it is allowed and we don't want them here. So I don't, I don't, I feel like we're a little bit in a no-win situation. No matter what we offer, no matter what we try to do, we, we get back, it doesn't work, it can't be done. Um, I still stand by my original premise. This is a good project. It's a good project for the city of Santa Fe. Um, we need more houses. We need more, more rent market rate. And it's just like we desperately need more affordable. We just happen to be doing a market rate this time. Um, this same group is looking at another project that will likely be affordable. So, you know, it's not, I do agree with Commissioner Faulkner that, you know, it's a difficult issue. But until the codes change and things are addressed, we have to work within the rules that we have. That's all we can depend on. And I also would say that, you know, the 438,000 dollars, it's meaningful. You know, the people benefit from that money. If it doesn't cover the same number of houses, I understand. But again, it's still meaningful. And that's, that's how we address that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I appreciate it. And I recognize it is a difficult issue when you are already providing more parking than you need to. Um, I, my, my own comment is I do think there is a lot to like about this project, the proposed walkability of the area that you're adding. Um, and I do always agree that, in general, there is a need to support more market rate housing in order to address our housing needs. Um, the, the one other thing that I wanted to ask, I don't know if I saw it in the packet or not, but there was a question or a couple of comments perhaps about school issues. Um, as part of this project and this development plan, did you have to reach out to the school at all? And did you get any response?
Thank you. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Tony Miller, 3471 Cerrios Road. Um, I'm part of the entitlement crew of working on this project. And part of the package that you have to do is you do have to reach out to the schools and have them state which schools are the, uh, the, the public schools that would be utilized by the residences of this, um, project. Do they speak to whether they can handle it or not? That's not, I guess, I don't know that they have a comment on that. They just state clearly which public schools would facilitate whatever residents are living in this complex.
So do you have to provide any sort of estimate of an approximate number of children that may come?
You have to provide the number of units.
Okay. And based on that, they say we have received your information. So that is the extent of the presentation. Okay. Um, thank you. That, that is all I need. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Faulkner, your hand is still raised. Is that from before or do you have some other questions? Okay, um, so are we ready to proceed with a motion?
Madam Chair, I would be willing to make a motion.
Uh, Commissioner Lawrence?
Um, I would make a motion to approve this development plan, subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections recommended by staff, making sure to include all of those technical corrections in Exhibit A and B.
Is there a second?
I second, I second.
There's, um, we have the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Toya? Is he still on? No.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. So now we move to staff communications.
Nothing at this time.
Matters from the commission? Commissioner Lawrence?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I just wanted to ask, it, it has been perhaps six weeks or a couple of months since we last asked about the status of the general plan and the other updates that the city is working on. I was wondering if there was any more information on that yet.
Chair Clow, yeah. Um, Commissioner Lawrence, thank you for asking, yeah. Um, so with the, um, Chapter 14 update, I know we're getting very, very close to signing the contract with our chosen contractor there. And, um, with regard to the, um, general plan update, um, maybe, um, we are working internally. Kind of had a, a meeting with, um, the city manager and Rich Brown this week to present some of our initial ideas, working on a scope of work, all internal work. And we've laid out a little bit of an outreach to internal, like the policy subcommittee will be reaching out to, to have a meeting of the planning commission as well as the governing body members individually by district. So it's, it's starting, is what I can say. Yeah.
And will fee-in-lu be addressed for multi-family housing? Seems to be a hot topic.
Madam Chair, in the, in the code update, unfortunately, it won't because that's Chapter 26, not 14. Uh, so I, but I think that, that is something that Alexander Latt is aware of. Um, of course, in the general plan, it will be considered, you know, in the, in the context of, you know, Chapter 26.
Of course, in the general plan, it will be considered, you know, in the context of, you know, Chapter 26 update.
Commissioner Smith?
Madam Chair, I'm one of the new friends on the block, so I may be smitten and accurate, but I would like to think that policy committee or any subset or members could ask the staff and start doing a review of all the different things we do and have in place for supporting affordable ownership or rental, things we have out in place that allow people to change the rules, and into a contract after they've booked something, and other alternatives that other communities are doing. I can learn and learn from where the world spends their time trying to understand. And we'll find the right socket to put the plug in before we got the plug.
Well, I know way back when Commissioner Lawrence and I and Commissioner Faulkner were on a committee to address affordable housing, and we met once, and then maybe twice. And then I think staff changed and other priorities started taking over. So does staff have any inclination to look at this? Are you guys overwhelmed with all the other issues in terms of the, you know, the rewrite of Chapter 14 and also the general, looking at the general plan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, of course, we have a strong inclination to look at it. You know, we all understand its importance, and we know, you know, there are strategic moves that need to be made that involve land use. But again, I think it will be more of a general plan, you know, initiative short of a, again, an update to Chapter 26. But yeah, I think we should definitely consider it, and as you all know, we have many, many, you know, initiatives and updates that need to happen and that we're working on. That one is not a, there's no current activity on initiative related to that, but yes, it's definitely on everyone's mind, and we do plan on, you know, making strategic changes to Chapter 14 that will affect affordable housing, but it's not the Affordable Housing Code, but it's, you know, the myriad of other ways that we can, you know, attack the problem in Chapter 14. You know, for example, making the development plan process more streamlined.
And incentives and other issues. But it's just, it's really difficult when one's dealing with multifamily. It's much more complex.
Yeah, I'd really like to look at density bonuses. It seems to be a challenge, but, you know, looking at that for multifamily, not just for single family. As we heard today, you know, the way the code's set up, it is performance-based right now, so, you know, that's definitely some, you know, place that we can look at.
Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Everyone in agreement? Okay.